I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. All right. Thank you, everyone. You can be seated. It's good to see everyone here today. Please remember to silence your cell phones and make sure just to sign in in the back there. We have Supervisor Nelson on the phone with us today. Mark, you still there?
Yes, I am.
All right. First up is the approval of the agenda. I'll move to approve.
A second.
All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich. Any discussion or changes here? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next up is the consent agenda. Items two through five constitute a consent agenda of routine action. Items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the October 21st, 2025 meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Number four from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas. Item A is approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. Item B is the approval of request to deauthorize county positions. Item C is approval to overlap employees and budgeted positions in the secondary roads department. Item five from County Treasurer, Tina Bertrand. Item A is approval of resolution for abatement for mobile home taxes for Tallview Terrace. Item B is approval of resolution for abatement of mobile home taxes for Yes Evergreen Village. Item C is approval of resolution for abatement of mobile home taxes for Yes Home Sales EXP. And D is approval of resolution for abatement for mobile home taxes for LA. And that ends the consent agenda, and I will move that.
Second.
All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich. Any questions or comments? All right. Here none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes five zero. All right. Item number six from secondary roads, low receivers. Item A is to receive bids for project number LB 7397 or return them to the county engineer for review.
We received six bids if you want to accept those.
I'll move to receive.
A second.
All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zeros. Mark? This is volume roller, Michelle. Okay. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, you're, you're good. All right. All right, go ahead, Laura.
All right. So again, the project is Bridge Number K-23. This is on 180th Street between Lucas and Lennox Avenue. Our first bid is from Christensen Brothers. And the bid is for $1,088,570.85. The next bid is from Dixon Construction. And that bid is $974,948.95. That was Dixon. The next bid is from Gaberson Smith Construction Company. And that bid is $1,244,831.65. This one is from Kramer and Associates, Inc. That is for $1,156,756.65. This next one is from Graves Construction. That is for $1,184,877.35. This is from Minton, Inc. That is for $991,953.15. I believe I have the lowest bid from Dixon Construction of Correctionville, Iowa. Is that what you have also?
Correct.
Okay. That total, again, was $974,948.95.
Okay. Does everything look good to that on the bid, do you?
I mean, we would have to go back and recalculate the numbers, but I mean, as long as their math is correct, they have the bid bond and everything with their paperwork.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to receive Dixon Construction to award them the bid for the project for LB 7397 in the amount of $974,948.95. Correct, Laura?
Yep.
Yep, okay. All right.
A second.
All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich. Any further discussion for Laura? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero.
And that was 15% lower than our estimate, so again, everything should be good to go, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. All right. Thank you for that. On to item seven from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas. Item A is the approval of the new Woodbury County Health Insurance Plan Designs effective January 1st, 2026. So come on up, and with that, we'll...
Hi, Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. So, the purpose of this agenda item today is obviously to increase the funding in our health plan and for our reserves. Now, what this agenda item would do, it would increase the deductibles and the out-of-pocket maximums for our health plans, HMO and PPO. Now, the reasons for these changes, as I just mentioned, are our levels of reserves we have to have. Every year, we have an actuary report, and we have to do that according to Iowa Code 509A. Well, this year, it came back $125,000 below levels. We made a motion, did a budget amendment, got that money in there so we can keep our self-funding. Now, previously this year, I believe it was with June, we also had to increase $600,000. So that $725,000, we're below funding this year, so I just want to put that out there. Now, with this, we did start working on this early this summer, and we did go and get a consultant to help us get through this time so we can keep our self-funded plan. Now, Seth Major, he has also worked on our comparables and given us options for our plan. Now, this is one of those options. I do have copies of this benchmarking that he did, and I would like to give everybody a copy of this, including Michelle, who didn't even record.
Move to received?
A second.
All right. Motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Melissa.
Is this something that can be put on the TV so the audience can see? I'm not sure they've received this.
No, I have it here. If they need it forwarded, they're going to figure out how to get it up there. Yeah, walk through that for us, if you'd agree.
Good afternoon, everybody. Seth Major with Gallagher. Couple of things to note here when we're looking through this. This is a benchmark of both just the state of Iowa and all public entities that we look at from a national basis. But when we look through, if you want to go to that next page, I apologize for the agenda items there. And then if we go one more, two more, this is a bunch of stuff that you guys don't need to go through right now. But you go to that next one, thank you very much. A couple of things to point out here, just, again, this is all data that we get with 4,000 participants, specifically public entities, 281. So there is some credibility to this. I could argue a couple of things here, but ultimately, what it comes down is, it is a credible scenario. Right now, the county spends right around, if you look at that lower left, it's $12,000 to $13,000. I'm going to guess that's a little bit higher this year because most of our increases are between 7% and 9%. So you'll see that jump up to $13,000 to $14,000. Right now, the county currently spends about 20, just over $24,000 per employee per month, which is double. Again, this is, our job is not to take anything away, but just to make sure that we're giving the information that is needed to make sure that we're being self-funded and still going on Iowa Code. If you go to that next one, if you look at the actual benchmarks, one more, thank you very much. Does everybody see that okay? So, don't look at the actuarial value, but what you're looking at here is the proposal of your $250 HMO. The thing about it is, is when walking through all this, we didn't want to change everything underneath the plan besides the deductibles and coinsurances. So that $250 plan and $750 out-of-pocket, that stays exactly the same, and that's the HMO. To the right of that is going to be another option, so you'll have actually three options with the PPO, which we'll talk about here in a second. But it's a $500 deductible and a $1,500 max out-of-pocket. If you look at your office visit co-pays, you know, if you go into the doctor, those are $20. If you look to the right on public entity, they're 25 to 40. Again, the one thing that we discussed at length was trying to figure out how to make all this work together. So we didn't want to mess with the co-pays and didn't want to disrupt what we already did in July, which was raise the number for the employees as far as what they're paying. So, below that is looking at your pharmacy, and again, that is right in line and better than what you see in public entity. And then if you look at your individual rate, this is where we need to work on this probably a little bit. You're at 983 and 1,018 for the proposal for 2016, I'm sorry, 2026. You look at public entity or even the state of Iowa, we're off by a couple hundred dollars in the public entity space and $300 to $400 in the state of Iowa. So we're just upside down a little bit there. If you look below that, the monthly employee cost share, this is something that we, again, establish how we recruit and retain employees to make sure that we're getting the best folks to come work for any business or county or public entity. You look at the individual cost share, and again, it's 57 and 136, 75 and 172, which, if you go to the public entity, 11% or $87 and 411 for family. So you guys are well below the benchmark even on the HMO plans if you guys chose to do this. Going to that next one, if you look at the PPO, so what's the difference between a PPO and an HMO? HMO, if you look at Wal-Mart's in Iowa specifically, we have a lot of folks on HMOs, but it covers every single hospital, 98.6% of all doctors in the state of Iowa. The 1.4% it does not cover are the doctors that do not contract with Wal-Mart, and there are folks out there that still do not take insurance. The other thing with HMOs, it covers every contingent county that surrounds the state of Iowa as well. So that's going to include, you know, Dakota, you know, Dakota County, Union County, all the way up to Minnehaha County. So every single contingent county is also going to be considered in network. If we look at the PPO, that's the scenario, we can go really wherever you want to, that's contracted. Mayo's the biggest thing around this area that folks are looking at and go to. That is proposed at 1,000, 3,000, and again, even with the jump there, we're at 935, and public entities are sitting at 829. But if you look down the threshold there, we're at 1,000 and 3,500, we're still below the benchmark there, all the way down except for the individual cost, which again, is right in line with what we see on a PPO, if you look at public entity and what the proposal is, at the 96 versus the 91. And then family cost share is well below what we typically see at the 468. So those are the proposals. The other piece of this too is, to Melissa's point, it's just, we're going to continue to see healthcare costs rising. You'll, if we stay on the current path and it does not get approved, we'll probably spend just right over $10 million this year in health insurance. This proposal will save about exactly, depending on which plans folks choose, it'll save just over a million dollars, to be exact on my calculations, I'd be happy to share this with you, $1,077,000. So that's the proposal, I guess, in a quick nutshell. Any questions on, that's a lot of information pretty quick, and I know everybody loves health insurance and money, so what questions can I answer?
What sort of deadline are you or we looking at as far as making a decision and when this health plan will be effective?
Sure. So I want to take a step back here. So Wal-Mart, I can shoot, I can send you an email, but this information was requested on September 26. They sat on this for about three weeks, and we have two or three different follow-ups. So that pushed our timeline back a little bit, which is not fair for anybody, period. We received this and it's turned around. So to answer your question, I just want to say first and foremost, Wal-Mart did apologize. I am actually going to talk to a manager about that to see if we can get some kind of administrative credit, which is the position that they put you guys into. But outside of that, all it's going to do is basically push back your open enrollment dates, but ultimately, you do have time. So you can take a week, two weeks, whatever the case may be. All that's going to do is just push our open enrollment timeline down the road a little bit. We just want to make sure that everything's in to Wal-Mart, no matter what you guys decide to do, by probably December 10th at the latest. And the reason being is we just want to make sure folks have cards, so if they do need something on January 1st, they have those in place.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
So three plans, you're saying?
It'd be three plans, it'd be two HMOs and the PPO. And the other thing too is people like choices. And if you go one more there, if you go one more further in there, on that presentation, I apologize for making you flip through that. One more, that's the HSA. And then if you look at benchmarking from a plan perspective, 28% of folks have three plans. But the reason being, we wanted a middle plan to be able to, if folks did want to have a lower out-of-pocket expense of $1,500 versus $3,000, they were able to do that at no additional cost if they wanted to go in that direction, so.
I do want to add one thing, that the lower HMO would be for deputies only since that's contractual, bargaining.
Okay. All right. Sure, yeah, go.
I just, Chad Sheehan, Sheriff, nice to meet you. When you compare us to other entities, did you compare how our wages compared to the other entities at the same time? And I asked that question because sometimes bargaining agents are negotiating wages and benefits differently from entity to entity. So they may have taken a lower wage increase to guarantee that their medical benefits were, stayed the same.
Yeah.
So is that included in any of the data?
So that would not be included in the data. Since 2018, I believe, after the non-bargaining piece of the health insurance went out, that is obviously a contention on what's our total benefit package, but that was not considered in this analysis.
Okay. And then another question, and maybe this is for a different time, but is, what's the reason we were 725,000 short? Is it just difficult to project, or what is that?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Actually, let me, I can...
Yeah, let Ryan and Melissa say it.
Just a quick, very simple...
Good question, Jack.
The county total contributions between health premiums that the county contributes and from the employee contributes was $6.7 million. Claims paid out for insurance was $8 million. So right there was a $1.3 million decrease in the health fund. So that is the major, the amount of claims paid out was 1.3 million more than what the contributions of premiums that came into the fund. That is the main reason why, at the end of the year, the fund started at 1.4 million. At the end of the year, the actuarial said that we needed $817,000 for what is called reserve for incurred but unclaimed, unpaid claims. So those are claims that have incurred but have not been paid out, but they have to do their best estimate on it. And we, that's, we, at the time, if we hadn't put in 720,000, we would have had 100,000 in our account. So that is kind of a very top-level explanation.
Okay. Melissa, do you want to?
Is there a reason, though, that it was so high? Is it just the cost increased, or we just really misguessed, or what?
I would say a cost increase, and maybe our funding should have increased throughout the years just a little more. So I think that would be the reason. Pharmacy, definitely.
Yeah, multiple factors.
Yeah, multiple.
Increased healthcare costs, not increasing over the years. Okay. All right. What other questions for the board? So Seth, the HMO, walk everybody through the HMO again, just kind of more detail. So you said 96% of providers are 98 in the, take HMO?
98. So this is a, again, the biggest drawback to a HMO in this area is the chiropractors. And what you've seen because of that, you see chiropractors and they're, you know, they're taking cash payments now versus, you know, a $20 copay. That's the biggest drawback on an HMO around here. However, 98.6% of all doctors will be in and every contingent county. So if you go up I-29, every single spot's going to be taken care of. The other piece to the HMO, if you do have a child or a dependent that is in another state because of college or whatever the case may be, you can be on an HMO. All we need to do is give Wal-Mart a heads-up on what county they're in to make sure that those folks are covered. So you don't have to go to a PPO if you didn't choose to do so. And lastly, federal law states that no matter which plan you're on, if you're in Florida or California or Colorado and you're on an HMO and there's an emergency, everything is recovered in network regardless of what network you're on. So that's another thing. I'm not trying to sugarcoat it by any means. I would be comfortable on an HMO. The other piece too is just as an outlier, not going to be on an island here. You still have quite, you know, quite a few providers, but if there is a scenario, and I've had two to this point, where the situation is such as there is a specialist in Colorado or at Mayo or at Cleveland Clinic, whatever the case may be, they will, if there's no doctor that says, hey, I'm comfortable doing this, they will send you out of network and it will be considered in network. So I'm not saying that it's the greatest thing on the face of the earth, but I would be comfortable on the Wal-Mart HMO, just knowing what the background is there. And I can speak a little bit to the costs. We did, you know, looking through the last six months of data, we have had some high claimants. I think that it is correcting a little bit. I will also tell you that we're also talking about some other options as far as going and looking at pharmaceutical benefits, et cetera. There's just a lot of moving pieces there that probably can be done over the next couple of years. But I, the one thing we don't want to do is take away, that wasn't the whole idea, is make sure that we keep people healthy, we're not paying more out-of-pocket. The other piece of this too is, the one thing that was in here that is not in here today that you guys do not have is preventative care. So all the preventative cares will be covered at 100% now. That's going to be including of your child well-being, vaccines, et cetera. Your women's health care as well, mammograms passed there at the ages that they allow, colonoscopies for both men and women. I believe that's over age 45 now is what the requirement is. So those are things that are covered. The other thing to this too is, as soon as we go to a plan like this, not to get real technical, but when you had a $500 or $750 out-of-pocket max, you were still paying in some cases co-pays and coinsurances and things like that. That out-of-pocket max is the true out-of-pocket max. So if I hit 750 bucks on the HMO on January 2nd, I will not pay another dime for the rest of the year. So that is also a little bit of a difference that would be on the side of the employees with less out of their pocket, because there is an end based on what the ACA requires.
Okay. Melissa, can you just kind of explain open enrollment and why we're needing to do this? And then also explain kind of what you're going to roll out, you're going to go out and be meeting with departments, if you can just go ahead and explain.
Yeah, we do have open enrollment through the month of November. And I know this not only affects our employees but also our retirees, so I want to make sure that everybody gets the correct information and plenty of time to change that election if they need to. If this is approved tonight, I do plan to go out to all the different departments. We have a PowerPoint available. Talk to people about, you know, the change, the HMO, if there's any questions. The, you know, the fact that we still do have our flexible benefits that can help with any additional deductible. And other things that the county does try to do, such as our wellness. So that's, the plan is if this gets approved today.
Right, okay.
And one more time, you got a response from Wal-Mart, when? You got a response from Wal-Mart, when?
The renewal came in, or the actual response on the new plans?
The response, the data.
It was a, I'll get the exact date to you, but it was last week.
We had our meeting last Thursday.
I believe the final information came in on Tuesday, so if we could back into that day, that'd be the 19th, I believe. They took about, so typical turnaround is seven days, seven to 10 days, especially during this time of the year. I, I don't know what exactly happened there. I'll find out what happened there, but they dropped the ball for three weeks. So it's, I'll just put that on, the onus on them, because that's where it belongs. And there's some other discussion that needs to happen around that as well.
Yeah. I'm, is it okay before we receive a bunch of comments by the board? So helpful for that date to be disclosed, so we know where the bottleneck sort of is. I'm still kind of annoyed at this whole, how this is coming out, you know, now. I didn't realize how little information had been shared with anybody about this. We obviously do have a shortfall, so we can't have our head in the sands, and we have to do something. But, you know, we're having a very technical discussion right now, and, you know, in my mind, this is what department head meetings are for, to get this information out. I'm not blaming you, Melissa. I know you just, you know, do what the board would like and the chair. And all due respect to the chair, but I don't think this is the right way to have rolled this out action on week one. I think we should postpone this for a week or two and get some information out. Staff would appreciate knowing exactly where these benchmarks are, so it's easier for them to communicate back to their offices and their staff. Since we do have some time before the December 10 deadline, I'm very familiar with that deadline. It's something that we should look at that date instead of, you know, if we have a little bit shorter window for open enrollment, all the blame is on Wal-Mart. But I don't really like this, you know, getting a flurry of emails this afternoon, and I know you're trying to be helpful, you know, forwarding, you know, to us and getting, you know, data to us. But a couple hours before the meeting is not ideal for something like this. It just gives the impression that we're, you know, I was not involved in this discussion intimately, so I'd appreciate that.
And I'm going to, I'm going to agree, I'll let Tina go first. I'm going to agree with Matthew too as well. I think we need a little bit more time on this. You know, this is pretty significant, especially to the employees, and it's a pretty significant jump. You know, obviously, yes, something has to be done, so we don't go through this year after year. And the county is looking at increasing its contribution as well, so, but I think we need just a little more time on this as well, maybe get some more information out.
Tina?
Excuse me, Tina Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. I have just a couple of questions, and I think I agree, this probably isn't necessarily the right place to do it, but I figured I'd put it out there, because other people might have the same questions. And one is trying to understand if there is an HSA Health Savings Plan account or policy available, and if that was looked at. The other one I would have, the other question I would have is, is there a max lifetime out-of-pocket on any of these plans? And if so, what are they? And are they changing from what we currently have? Because that's a question that's coming up with a lot of, a lot of people in the industry.
So high deductible health plan, you're spot-on. That is something that sixty percent of all folks are offering now, and I will tell you, that's just part of, I would say, modernization of benefits. And this was, just with the timing and everything else, we did not look at a high deductible health plan. I would say that's something that they can definitely consider at any point in time. I think it would be a great move, just from a recruiting retention perspective, and a way for people to think about benefits a little bit differently. But to answer the other question, there is no, part of why we're seeing these increases year over year, not a bad thing, is because there is no cap on what the lifetime benefits are anymore. So if you have ten million dollars in claims, doesn't make a difference, and unfortunately, we're starting to see some of those actually. So there is no limit as far as what you would receive throughout your lifetime max. It's a good question.
Just clarifying, do we still have retirees on the plan?
Up until sixty-five, yes.
Up until sixty-five.
Hi, I'm Dawn Norton, I'm a county employee. I think a lot of other employees are feeling the same thing, like we've been blindsided. When you look at these numbers, you're talking, you know, three times what we're paying for out-of-pockets and deductibles. I know that there is an HOM, or HMO option, but that doesn't fit so well with some, and I know that that's kind of been a really highly suggested idea. I feel like when you go to buy a car, sometimes numbers are jumbled up a different way. And I, I, it's just really disappointing that it's gone up. This was one of the attractive things about working for the county, is having our, the benefits that we do. And I, I, along with other people, appreciate it. But this is just, I mean, and I understand healthcare has gone up, and it's got to be, it's got to get addressed somehow. But I don't understand why, this late in the game, now it's tripled what we, as far as our out-of-pockets and deductibles. And postponing it is a good idea, but we're against the clock to get it all set, set up too. So that's just what I wanted to put in there.
Thanks, Dawn.
Corey Davis, hi, guys.
Hey, Corey.
A lot of things have already been, been said, some people have taken the wind out of my cells, out of my cells here. I'm really, really grateful to hear that Mr. Dietrich and I have already mentioned possibly postponing it. I think it's way too soon. I mean, I, my phone started blowing up on Sunday, that, you know, have you seen what they're, what they're looking to vote on? And I was, you gotta be kidding me. I couldn't believe it. So really, really hope that the, you guys decide to, to wait on this. But, you know, obviously, you put a lot of time and effort into this, and Melissa's press line numbers, I'm sure that everybody has. I know that money's tight, so, you know, there's, there's only so much. But we, we just can't, we can't take this much money directly out of our members' pockets, or, you know, or our workers, you know, the people who take care of our communities' pockets, regardless of what they do for the, for the county. And that's what, I mean, those deductible, those, those deductibles, that's exactly what that is, you know, for a family to go up by, you know, four times, from five hundred to, to, what, two thousand? I believe one of, one of the numbers was I was looking at, not to mention the, the out-of-pocket maximums. I mean, that's, I mean, nobody wants taxes to go up, but that's taxing the people that are doing the work for our county. I mean, that's, that's completely negating any type of raises or, or wage increases they might have, they might have got. You know, we might have negotiated, and to Sheriff Sheehan's point, over the, over the thirty years, or thirty-plus years that the, that our roads contract has been going on, we used to be able to negotiate things like healthcare. And because of that, you know, there were, I'm sure, many years before I was around, where they might have taken a lower wage because they, they held on to the healthcare. And, you know, that compounds over the, over the years, that our wages are where they're at, because we can, you know, because of some of those decisions that they made previously before anybody had, and who would have known that in 2025, we wouldn't be able to negotiate healthcare? So it, I mean, the last couple of days, talking with our members, and talking with them, in meetings over, over the last couple of years, it comes up all the time, that people, people stay here, they come here and they stay here for three, for three reasons. So the I-Pers, number one, and a lot of people are like, man, if it wasn't for my I-Pers, you know, and they, and they get frustrated, you know, I'd be out of here. We hear that a lot. Number two is always benefits, you know, like, well, you know, I could go somewhere else and make more money, but I got a good schedule, I got, you know, this or that, you know, I like my benefits, healthcare being one of them, you know, because they're, it's, you know, there's, that's, affects people's budget a lot. And the third part, which is my favorite, but I would be, it would be sad to see it go, because benefits are going, you know, because benefit costs get taken away from them. They get the chance to serve their community, the, you know, my guys, they all, you know, most of them live out of the county, on county roads, the same roads that they take care of. You know, they like being able to take care of their friends and family, they like being able to wave, and they know everybody who's on the road, and, you know, hey, could you make sure to get this? You know, they like have that personal connections with the community. So I would hate to see, you know, one of those three pillars fall with this. So I don't know what all the answers are, you know. I hate to take away from all the work that Melissa and, and you've done with this, but, you know, I like to think that, that Woodbury County and our elected officials, that we're not following the graphs and the, and the rest of the world with this. You know, I know that you got a lot of cost comparisons, things like that. I like to think that you guys are leaders, not followers, and following with what other counties are doing, or what other entities are doing with their healthcare. So I think with enough time, and I know time's still short too, but I think that, you know, I've just got to put, put faith in that you guys can figure out a better solution for this. If that means opening up our contract, you know, our contract to offset some of that for the wages again, you know, CDW is open to that, but that doesn't take care of everybody at the county that would be affected by this, so. Thank you, Joe, bud.
Thanks, Corey.
And Michelle.
Derek Brand, President, CWA seven-one-seven-seven. I'll keep this relatively short. The potential financial impact for the employees, and to have this come about so abruptly with no advance notice or information, is extremely drastic. You know, you've spoke up here about transparency, and I don't think this shows any transparency when we just try to push this through last second, and employees find out about it a couple of days ahead of a meeting, okay? I think that's a little bit difficult for people. The sheriff alluded to different compensations, and with, with their study, I, there's comparables that have received increases or something to offset some of the added costs, right? There's other things that have gone on. I don't know if that's even been looked at or explored, and are we just looking at a one-year study? Or did we study more years to see if this is a continued increase each year, or were we okay every year up until this year, and now all of a sudden we're off? And now we're going to make a drastic change because of it? I'd be curious to know, do we look at anything more than that? So I would appreciate if you guys did put this off and discuss it, that some of us could have an opportunity to sit down and provide you with some additional information that might help you to understand our sides of it as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Hi, my name is William Melville, and I'm a Woodbury County taxpayer, but I'm one of your insureds. My spouse works for the county, and I'm on your insurance plan. And when I saw this, I was, I was rather shocked. I have quite a bit of experience. I used to work for the folks next door here, and I used to help negotiate contracts for the Sioux City Police Department. And I was shocked at a three hundred percent increase in your PPO out-of-pocket. I mean, that's massive. For somebody making fifty thousand dollars a year right now, if they max out the PPO benefits, they're going to lose two and a half percent of their salary. Your proposal, they're going to lose twelve percent of their salary. I saw some email exchanges back and forth that I was read on, that there's a continual shortcoming, or shortage to the health insurance plan coming up year after year, and it's jeopardizing the county being self-insured. I totally get that. My question is, has there been a study done that more than every six months, or more than every twelve months, how can you keep costs down, number one? And what are those projected costs going to be, so that instead of suddenly dumping a gigantic expenditure on the employees, you could step this in, in, maybe not even all in the same bucket of money, but in different parts of the plan, so that you can avoid those shortfalls in the future? And I understand costs can vary widely. I also stand, understand, because I was part of what was called a Plan Document Committee for the city, employee usage varies widely as well. So you might have a few people that are very, very sick a few years, that drive your costs through the roof, and then the next year, they're fine, and those costs come back down. So I would encourage the county to get together with some of the folks from your different departments, the actual employees, and talk about ways to avoid this in the future. Where could you actually make some changes to your plan that everyone's not going to scream and yell about, or get kicked in the wallet over? But also, I think you as a board need to make sure information gets disseminated in the form of the actuary studies, the spending, spending reports, because we've asked for some of that today, or I should say, people that I'm familiar with have asked for that today, and have gotten nothing. They got the Gallagher handout that you gave, and it doesn't show where's the county spending the money? Is it hospitalizations? Is it prescriptions? Is it office visits? Is it ER visits? So, because those are all areas that you can take different tax towards and help keep the high expenditure areas down. And I understand, I looked at the city employee handbook today to compare it to the county. I understand you have great insurance, because that's been an argument that has been presented to some of the employees today, is, well, you still have really good insurance. Well, great, don't ruin it. That's kind of a, sorry, that's kind of a backwards argument to say, we got great insurance, so we're going to take a bunch of money out of your pocket. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. I guess, like everyone here, it's a little shocking to a lot of employees to see these type of numbers that could possibly start to affect them in the next two months. And with that, I ran some numbers on what employees are currently being paid in Secondary Roads. And if they're in those health situations where they are maxing out their out-of-pocket, right now, it's around three percent. And it's going to be thirteen percent for some employees, twenty percent for another employee that I have. That's, that's life-changing. That's choosing to buy groceries and not buy groceries. And I felt like the employees did a little bit of sacrificing last budget year, and the taxpayer didn't. And now, again, I feel like the employees are going to take the hit and the taxpayers aren't. And so, you know, at some point, I feel like maybe taxes could start to go up to help our employees keep their good benefits. Speaking of the new employees, one of my first questions I ask in an interview is, is why do you want to come and work for Woodbury County Secondary Roads? And I would love for them to say, it's me, but it's not. It's, it's the benefits. First word, it's the benefits. And every time that we have a position out to the public, less than a handful apply, less than a handful. And of that handful, you know, sometimes there's more than one that you want to interview, and sometimes, you know, it's not, and that's unfortunate, but, you know, we've gotten some great hires, and we really appreciate them. But again, when every single time they come to the table and they say it's the benefits, and I'm not going to be able to offer that to them, now who's going to apply? You know? People definitely notice when we have those positions not filled. They notice, because they call us and say, you know, our road's not being taken care of, or, you know, the snow removal took a very long time for you to finally get to our road. So, I mean, this is, this isn't just affecting the employees. I feel like this is really affecting all of Woodbury County. I would love to see more options, as, as you put a lot more pressure on your employees to have to pay these kind of out-of-pocket expenses, I would really like to see an HSA option, that being that maybe we have young families who would like that option to build up a bank, to be able to spend on their out-of-pocket, but we didn't even offer that. We were only offering them two options, and some people probably would prefer neither of the options. So could we start offering, and I know it's asking more work, the more options you offer, the more hard it is for all the, every single payroll. And then I'd also like to say that I feel like it's a huge benefit for retirees, you know, up to a certain age, to be able to be offered, be able to get the health insurance. Can they start paying more? If, if the retirees are the ones who are killing our, you know, pot, can they, can that group of people start paying a lot more into our program? You know, I just feel like, how many more hats, how many more pots can be available so that people can really find something that works for them? I know you guys all appreciate everyone that works for Woodbury County, and this is going to be really hard for them, and so I really hope that we can take a look at this a little bit longer and try to find more options that are available. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Troy Polley, Secondary Roads. What Laura said there, I'm within five years of retiring from here, and you guys have offered something for us for, if we have our sick leave full or whatever, we can burn that out. But the math don't quite show up right on that either, for just one year, if you have five hundred hours. And if there is somebody lower, if they can, if they have three hundred hours, if they can put that towards something, I know we've talked about that a little bit, but and to take it more than one year is what I'd like to put in there, too. Because if I, if I'd be fifty-eight years old when I can leave. So I'd like to be able to, and everybody else too, take it as far as we can for that health insurance. If, you know, if you got the sick leave on the hand.
Right.
So, all right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Troy. All right.
Hello, my name is Daniel Luna, live at twenty-four zero-nine South Cypress Street in Sioux City, Iowa. Just want to take this time to express the concern I have. I want to say thank you for pausing on this, at least for a couple more weeks, to fully understand the changes that could affect all the employees here. And I have loved ones and friends that are currently employed in Woodbury County, that I keep in mind during this, this process, during this change, that impacts quite a bit of people here. I used to work for Woodbury County as a jailer, and one of the best things I could boast about in that position was the benefits. Anybody wanting to at least kickstart their career in law enforcement, I'd say, go work for the Woodbury County Jail, it's a good place to work, and you have great benefits. And I still do think that. However, with the recent changes, it's going to start to kind of change my mind about those things. Because I want people to work for Woodbury County. And I know I left a few years ago, and just kind of want to tell you something, like I worked for the city of North Sioux City, and that's where I moved to. And we used to have great insurance, just like Woodbury. I would hear all the stories from administration and people who have been there for years longer than I I would hear all the stories from administration and people who have been there for years longer than I have about how it used to be great. And then the city reviewed it, and we ended up getting an inferior insurance, and we can never go back. And it's something that we struggle with as employees, trying to discuss and bring it to the table, whether that's with our union or with the city in meetings, to discuss, how can we get better insurance for our employees? And how to take care of the families that these employees have to go home to. So I just ask that you keep that in mind. Take careful consideration about the employees, the friends and family that are among us here. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. All right. Well, any other? Go ahead.
Heather Satterwhite, in Board Administration. And I didn't know if I was gonna get up or not, but I feel the need to. I've worked for strictly the Board Administration Office for over sixteen years now. I do feel that is a unique position with the Board of Supervisors. We get to know you probably more so than any other department may, or, you know, department heads probably know you pretty well, but for, as far as employees go, Karen and I know, you know, and we work with you every day pretty well. So I have faith in you. And to listen to all of, all of us, and I, I drove home on Friday in tears after I seen this because I know how much more this is gonna be out of my pocket. It will affect me personally. And this is a job that I've always promoted to everybody. I've always talked very highly of Woodbury County. And one of the main things was our health benefits that I would always push out there when, you know, I talked to certain people. You know, we've been doing recruiting for county attorney so much in the last couple of years. It's hard to keep correctional officers. And I would say that part of that recruitment was offering this. I mean, if you look on the website, the first thing you're gonna see, when you look at our job openings, is two hundred and fifty dollar deductible. First thing you're gonna see. So we've been promoting that. So I would really hope that we should take some time. I mean, it was already admitted that, you know, for years, this was not increased. And now all of a sudden, it's gonna come down to one meeting, and that's not fair. Our old Budget Finance Director's not here to speak for himself. So I'm sure he had a, I know he had a big role in that decision-making over the years. So I just hope that we see that, you know, you can't do this with that much of an increase. And then this is gonna take effect in two months. It's just too much, too soon. I feel like it's rushed. I mean, we also, I don't know what fund it was out of, but we paid Gallagher forty thousand dollars for this report. And this is the first I've seen it, and sitting right there, I couldn't even read it. It'd be nice to see that. That's another thought that I had tonight. And what else do I have notes on here? I would also like to see, and maybe I could get with Ryan on this, but I would like to see previous fiscal year fund balances prior to this year and see, like, what we did every year. How much did we transfer into this fund every year? I'd like to see more numbers regarding history, so I don't, I'd just like to see that history. I know one thing that was also spoke today was that our premiums, you know, looking at this, it's supposed to be, you know, it did not include a premium that just went up in July. That was not spoke about. I mean, it was spoke about, but not by Gallagher. It was brought up. And that was twenty dollars a month for a single and forty thousand dollars a month for family, just July first. When we already knew, you know, numbers were not good, I'm sure by July first. I guess the last thing is that, and this is a whole other story or whole other discussion, but even in Iowa, I mean, everything's working against us. I mean, we're at number two in the nation for cancer rates in Iowa. We're eighteenth for the county, out of all the other counties. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. I mean, we all have these risks now that are pretty high, so of course, insurance rates are going to be higher as well. But that's something, who knows how we can control that, but I would just say that I would ask for you to consider the human side of these numbers and just to keep in mind how deeply this will affect all of us. Thank you.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. I'd like to thank Melissa and Gallagher for the work that they put in on this. I know it has to be a tough position to be in. But I'd also like to make sure the board understands where our employees come from. I've always, unfortunately, historically, our county wages have been slightly lower than others. And I've fortunately been always able to use our benefits package as a really good tool on hiring. I can give you one example. I had a maintenance technician. I knew him. We had an open position. I called him. He wasn't looking for a job, but I said I had an opening. I'd like him to come and work for me. And I understood that our pay might not be the same as he was making, and I wasn't sure what he was making, so I asked. And I said, yeah, that's a couple of dollars more an hour than what we're offering. His reply back was, well, can you, can you do better? Can you meet me in the middle somewhere? And I said, no, I, I can't. I've offered you the highest wage I can bring you in at. But what I can offer you is a really, really good benefits package. He reviewed that benefits package that we had, and he came to work for Woodbury County. And he told me that's why he was coming. So I think it's important to, to understand what the, what the balance there is. And I hate to see that advantage taken away from us. Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny. All right, anyone else?
Sorry, I'll try to keep it short. My name is Haley Messerschmidt. I work for the County Attorney's Office. I came here from Lancaster County, Nebraska, back when our office was shorted back in March of twenty twenty-three. I was told at that time, the benefits package here was amazing. The healthcare plan was amazing. I quickly learned it wasn't much better and potentially a little worse than what I was getting in Nebraska. Medications that were covered there, I had to pay out of pocket. The premiums were basically the same. There I had to pay for dental, and the premium for the health insurance side was less, actually. And basically, I was getting the same amount of coverage here, paying more for the insurance side of it, but not, but getting the dental for free. So it kind of came out to about the same. But like I said, there were aspects to it that ended up not being as amazing as I thought they were gonna be. And I'm not trying to bash Woodbury County's health insurance plan in any way, but it is something where I've talked to another employee in our office who came from Nebraska, and he agreed we had better healthcare plans over there than we do here. That is something that individuals consider when they are looking for employment. That's one of those benefits of working for a government agency. You may not get paid as much as you would in the private sector, but you're getting some of these benefits. And that's what this county and the board now is looking at doing, is essentially altering those plans and making our benefits, as it relates to insurance, less, or less marketable to those wanting to be employed. In July, our premiums were nearly doubled. And now the discussion is severely altering the plan, raising the deductible on the PPO plan. I think it's about four times the deductible than what it currently is. That's a drastic change. Two times on the HMO, and, and again, not trying to bash Sioux City, but there are some people in this town that just don't trust the, the healthcare system. We have amazing healthcare workers here, but overall, there are some people that just have those trust issues. And so you're severely limiting their options there. But like I said, we are dealing with one of those benefits that makes it an amazing issue or amazing benefit to work for the county, and we're severely altering that and essentially reducing that benefit. Retention issues came up throughout this past year for our, our office, as this board is well aware. We had MOUs passed, and about a year ago, there was an MOU, which was the last MOU, where departments from across the board were showing up and saying they also were having retention issues, hiring issues. I bring up the MOU not to bring up all that past history, but to say it's obvious that we've got retention and hiring issues across the board here in Woodbury County. And to address or, or reduce our benefits by altering the insurance plan and making it worse, and then increasing our benefits massively, or our premiums massively, excuse me, I missed a book, is going to reduce people's willingness to come to be hired here, as well as retention issues. I think we're looking at those issues down the road. May not be an immediate thing, but these are already issues we're dealing with on a countywide issue or a countywide problem, and we're just gonna exacerbate that. I understand as a taxpayer, I understand that balance. I get it. But I think this is just a very drastic change. One thing I will note is that Gallagher report, it's dated yesterday. So as Mr. Ung pointed out, it's a very quick turnaround here. We're not getting information out in a, in a timely manner and just trying to throw this together. I think, as he suggested, and Mr., is it Dietrich or Dietrich, suggested tabling this, to get a little bit more information is appropriate. One thing I noted in that report is, it said, market trends. Future business success depends on employee trust of leadership and turnover rates. Those are exactly the things we're discussing here today and the issues that these employees are bringing up as we're looking at potential issues with turnover rates, retention, as well as trust in the leadership here. He also noted that it is twenty-four thousand per month for employee, I believe is what he said. I had somebody watching this and rewinding it, and that's, they confirmed that's what he said. I don't know if that was a misstatement, but I looked at my, my health insurance plan. It was nowhere close to even twenty-four thousand a year, so I don't know where that number is coming from. It seems a rather drastic number there. And then he indicated, people like choices, but the people don't like these choices. Not one person I've talked to likes the choices that are being presented here today. Like I said, these are drastic changes. So I'd ask the board to, to consider the thoughts of everybody in this room. I know you all will. But like I said, I get balancing the taxpayer issues, but also what happens when we start losing employees, retention issues, having troubles getting hired on, people hired on. We're right back to square one in those issues, and so there's that balancing act there. Thank you.
Thanks, Haley. All right.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, come on up, Seth. Yeah, go ahead.
If I said that monthly, that was, that was misstated. It is annually.
Annual, you got twenty-four thousand.
Don't have anything probably to say that hasn't already been said other than to say to the, to the people in the, in the room, the workers in the room, that I've done some work with, with several of you during negotiations, and I'm confident that you will do what's right by these employees. And if, and if, if I can help in any way, Melissa, you, or anybody, I'd be willing to volunteer time, make time on my calendar. I know there's at least one other retired person in the room that I've done some negotiating work with in the past. He was willing to get up and speak, so I'm guessing he might be willing to volunteer if his arm was twisted and spend some time working with you all to find a solution. And I, I, I don't remember who said it, but let's be leaders here, not followers. We can come up with maybe perhaps some creative solutions that aren't gonna be crippling to the people that are doing the heavy lifting for the county. You know, the employees are doing the heavy lifting. For me, you know, they do all the hard work. But I just wanted to encourage you to, to take that time. I have confidence in all of you. I've been behind the closed doors. I know you're gonna try and do what's right for these employees. But if there's any way that I can help or twist the arms of other people who might be willing to help, we'll do that. We'll make ourselves available. You just let us know, and we'll do what we can if you need doing research or crunching numbers or whatever.
Sure. Thanks, Jed.
Daniel, I will, I would like to answer Heather's question that she had earlier. Just at the end of the fiscal year of twenty-two, the fund balance was two point six million. At the end of twenty-three, the fund balance is two point one million. At the end of twenty-four, the fund balance went down to one point two million. At the end of twenty-five, it was down to one hundred thousand dollars, but then we injected seven hundred and twenty-five thousand into it. So it ended at eight hundred and sixteen thousand. The current fund balance as of today is five hundred and seventy-two thousand.
And that's all, right. And that all came from cash reserves?
Yeah, the seven twenty-five came from cash reserves, yes. So over the last, basically, five years, it's gone down over two million dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Joshua Whitman, County Attorney's Office. Feels a little awkward to stand down here, and I'm just speaking tonight as a county employee and obviously not as counsel to the board. I think it's, it's been mentioned a couple of times, but not directly. And the point that I want to make is, initially, there was a comment, there's six hundred thousand dollars that was made up in June. The source for that six hundred thousand dollars was the county employees. July first, we all had a rate increase. I don't know what it is across the different categories, individual, family. I know personally, on my check, the increase was thirty-three percent in my premium. And that six hundred thousand, it wasn't something that was made up in June. It's being made up every other week as, as employees get our paychecks. And we're already helping the county make up that shortfall. And so I would join with the others and ask the board to consider if there's incremental steps that are available. I know the board has brought on a consultant to look at the pharmacy benefits plan. And I don't think that we have the result of that yet. There was a statement that some of the claims on the pharmacy side are starting to correct already. I think that the board could take a hard look at the numbers of, okay, what are our actual numbers for this year? Because a lot of the discussion has been about what happened last year. And obviously, we need to be in a good financial position, but the million dollars of savings that was talked about under this proposal is the county employees would be responsible for. And again, I would ask the board to consider, are there other incremental steps that are available? Thank you.
Thanks, Joshua. All right.
Hi, Michael Andreessen, District Department Foreman. Just want to say thank you for pausing this for now. I found out this on Friday night. I was in shock. I was blindsided. I messaged my employees right away, told them about it, so they knew about it over the weekend. And of course, everyone was in shock. I don't know why we weren't notified sooner on it, which I kind of heard why. I don't know how we're gonna, if we follow through with this, if there's gonna be, gonna be compensated in wages to cover this. Open the contract for a bigger raise for the guys to be able to afford this. I don't know. Like Laura said earlier, we only get four applications right now, and most of them come because of benefits. We just had a guy leave his job to come here starting tomorrow. The only reason he came, insurance. And our mechanic that we just hired for Secondary Roads, he came for his insurance as well. He took a pay cut. But guess what? He's here. He's saving us, saving taxpayers money. So just wanted to say that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike. All right. Anyone else before we move on? We don't want to belabor, you have a chance to speak, but we do.
Yes, Kevin Cream, Director at Sundance Street Health Department. Kind of pertinent to this is that we do a lot of internal sort of culture surveys. We spent three hours, three years now, trying to work on projects to reg- We spent three hours, three years now, trying to work on projects to recruit staff because we have some difficult to fill positions. So now our next focus is on to the retention of staff. And so out of my staff, I've got 32 that are actually, out of the 63 that have been there five years or more. And we see that as a kind of a threshold to get them past the five-year mark. We have reached out to them to find out what are things that kept them at Sullen District Health Department over that course of time. And also, I will point out, these are the staff members that weathered the COVID crisis and the pandemic with us, and they worked through that. But basically, what they said is the main reason they're there is for the benefits. The IFRS, the health insurance, and then also the hours that we keep because they're more contained within that too. When we get down to the, there were points in time, we also wanted to ask the question, are there, is there a time when you considered leaving? 71% of those 32 did indicate there were times that thought, they entertained that thought. But as they began to assess other positions in the community or looking at those, the main thing that brought them back was the fact of the benefits, including the health insurance. And so what I'm looking at now as we look towards retention is it's another tool we have to retain long-term good employees within the system that we're working, and I think that's probably equitable across all departments. So I think those are some of the things that we have to consider. We never want to be in a deficit without staff because the residents and county will still demand services. So those are just some thoughts that came back from the direct feedback from Health Department employees.
Thank you. Thanks Kevin. All right.
Doyle Turner, 2738 200th Street, Mowville. I'm really impressed by the demeanor that everybody has taken here. I've been in this exact situation. I have my own health insurance. I bought it 23 years ago. I've had the same policy. I've been lucky enough that it got a waiver from Obamacare. That policy started out with three kids at $232 a month. It topped out at $2,700 a month. Thank God, one of my kids went off of it, so I'm down to $2,400 a month. I tell you this because the board, the county has basically, I understand the, what you're looking at. You know, these are major changes. And I think you need to understand that every time I've gotten an increase, I didn't get any more time than this. Usually, the increase comes out in a letter this time of year, and on January 1st, it takes place. So this is the industry. You can't blame the board for the timing. You can't blame the agent for the timing. This is how the industry works. You know, I was seeing multiple increases of between 50 and 60% every year. Obamacare just wrecked this whole thing. And I know this is, this is a real adjustment, but I think you have to realize you've been insulated from what the industry has been doing. The county has stepped up and paid those extra premiums all down through the years. You go out into industry, they have not done that. Many people are carrying huge deductibles, 10, 15,000, and they're paying close to the same amount that I'm paying. And I'm lucky enough, my policy is old enough that with the waiver, if they hadn't gotten the waiver, they would have had to have gotten rid of it. I have a $300 deductible, a 1,300 maximum out of pocket. And I have gone through that maximum out of pocket because I have a lot of health problems. I've gone through that every year for over 20 years. I had to retire at 45 because I couldn't do the farm work anymore. So that money, those increases really hurt. So when we consider how much can we really go to the taxpayer and say, pay more, you're going to have a little problem considering your average taxpayer doesn't have a policy anywhere near this good. And they're paying a whole lot more than you are. So I'm not telling you to not get as good a deal as you can, but remember that the taxpayer's gone through as much or more pain than what you're going through. So we have to remember that somebody's paying for this. And yes, we want good employees, and I'll tell you, I go to a lot of different counties. Our roads are better than most of them. Our county people do a better job than most of these other counties. I'm proud of my county. And I tell people about that, and I have a lot of people that watch Woodbury County for the things they do. And I want you guys to get the best deal you can get, but the simple reality is this healthcare is insane. It is out of control. It's not sustainable. And unfortunately, this is what everybody's dealing with. Thank you.
All right. Well. Mark, you still there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, all right, so make sure.
Oh, someone else?
Eric Roble, Secondary Roads. I was born and raised here in Woodbury County. I remember when I was a kid at my grandparents' house on Carroll Avenue, out in the country, north of Salix, watching the graders go by. I dreamed of getting in those machines one day. I'm here now. I've worked for Sullen Water Conservation District here, Iowa DNR through Americor. I worked for Nature Conservancy, multiple NGOs and government organizations. I left county for a while, went up to Minnesota, worked for Minnesota DNR. Grand Portage, Band of Lakes, Perry, Chippewa, so I know how government works. I'm going to filibuster here a little bit, just to let you guys know that this is a hardship on all of us employees. I don't have the exact numbers and everything from, you know, what's going on here and everything. But I remember our last pay increase was basically a wash with the increase of the insurance. This is hard for everybody. It's crushing to know that people are going to struggle through this. And the economy and everything, it's been going to, to crap for the last few years, number of years. Pretty much, it's always been a toll, but. I'm to the point right now where I'm going to start looking for other jobs. And I really enjoy what I'm doing right now. I don't want to leave. But at this point, it's tough. It's going to be tough to make a living. Granted, all my kids are out of the house, but I've got grandkids that I would like to, you know, with the economy and everything, what I'm saying is help them out. And it's just getting tough right now. And like Laura said, it's hard to retain county employees. When I was a kid, everybody, I used to hear my grandparents, my parents and my aunts and uncles talk, oh, the county, you'll never get a job with the county because there's too many people applying for the county jobs. Now, what, we get a handful of people to apply for, and who was the gal that was talking about retention? Me, I'm looking, going to start looking for another job if this stuff doesn't change some way or another. But anyways, I'll let it go with that, but I just wanted to let you guys know that a lot of this other county employees here, that it's going to be a struggle for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Eric.
So two big things and points of education and things to keep in mind. I know that we send out, I think we send out like total compensation advisements every year. Do we still do that? Were we? Or is that just as requested? Like where you include the total compensation package value? I mean, I was thinking that's a helpful thing to show how much the cost has gone up and how much the county's paying. But it's also sort of nuanced there because we have a self-direct, you know, self-funded plan, which is not what employers, you know, are dealing with and working with, and they're not talking about it being jeopardized. So some education on how, like, what is the deadline, the timing for jeopardizing this plan? Because priority number one is not jeopardizing the plan. And priority, you know, is also to, you know, realize pre-ACA plans are the best. And costs do go up. They do outpace everything else in this country. And what I've noticed with other businesses is that eventually the corporation or the business starts to look at the employee a little more closely and the benefit to the employee. And what I mean by that is you look at tiers, you look at options, you look at HSAs for higher earners, you look at, you know, plus spouse, plus children plans, you look at different things like that. And it really helps to decide how you're going to fairly assign the cost increases. Because you can more easily do that if you're dealing with the employee. If you're, if you're dealing with all the dependents, then it's a little bit different calculation. You have to be thinking, okay, so the taxpayer is taking on not only the motor grader, but all the dependents, so to speak, and you just have to say, this is what the cost of that is. But then you also have the discussion about the wage, which is only for the employee. And you don't, you know, you don't know, are you keeping employees on the plan that would not select that if it was more focused on the employee? And this is just a lower impact way of reacting to the health cost increases, which is the country's fault, I guess, than, you know, doing plan, you know, overall plan changes in one fell swoop. So there's some things to keep in mind.
When's the hard date Melissa? December 10th, Matthew, you mentioned that. Is that the hard date we have to have plans and changes in to Wellmark?
Yes, and then also the renewal signed.
Renewal signed, by the 10th, okay, okay.
Like for example, somebody brought up, you know, medical costs, but also our fixed costs have increased too. So if somebody does hit, you know, that high amount of claim, we have like a stop-loss insurance and like any other insurance, once you use it, that goes up. So that, you know, in itself is going up, I think, 20%. And, you know, not to go on to the next item, but that is one of the reasons why that 6.5% is there because just our fixed costs are going up 6.5% as of January 1st, no matter what any other piece of the plan does.
Right, so, right, what she's talking about is Item B is right.
Right, I just kind of wanted to.
The county will have to pay 6.5% more fixed costs, so the board is going to pay that.
Right, so that's just like a minimum, right?
Right, we have to find that in the budget. So just solve our employees, now that's going up regardless. And that puts us still at 13% back behind the total fixed costs. I want to put over the last two years, it's been 19.5%. So even with that, we are still behind from a fixed cost perspective. The county is on the employer's side, so. So I think that's just good, yeah, big plan, everyone knows the numbers of what we're dealing with.
Right.
One aspect, but I agree with Matthew, you're saying it there.
And I also want to say that we haven't paid Gallagher for this report. Their expenses are going to come out of the renewal, so let everybody know that.
Okay. Well, so December 10th, all right, it's hard, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to postpone. A second.
Motion by Ung, second by Carver. All right. Any other comments from the board? All right. Ung, in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Mark, are you there?
Yes, I voted aye.
Aye, okay, all right. Our motion passes 5-0 to postpone. Okay. All right. And before we move on, let me just say, as the board, I think everyone here, we appreciate everyone being here. As you guys know, I do think the board, some words were being thrown around about transparency. I think the board has, in my three years on the board, has been very transparent and has shown, I think, whereas Chad's still here, I don't know if Chad, but has shown the demonstration of work. And we are open, we care about our employees. And so I would just say, looking at the plan does not devalue or, it's not devalue, and looking at this plan today, having it on the agenda is not an in-your-face, you know, middle finger, you know. It's not that. It's just we're looking up at some hard deadlines, looking at if we don't get stuff changed by this January 1st, we have to wait a whole nother year, which affects costs, which affects our fixed costs, which affects knowing what changes we have to make. And so, so once again, I do read the board, we can postpone this, we can look at this. But some prices are going to have to change, just so everyone knows. I think everyone is in agreement. Some of the stuff's going to have to change, right? Yeah, I see you Mike, that's good. Right, some minor changes, we're going to have to change. We're going to have to change, update and look at things. But I do believe the board was always willing to work with our employees. You guys do a great job. But do know that, you know, the board has to find the cost for this stuff. I know it's been said, raise taxes on the citizens, but I know that's something I don't think, I want to commit to that. I know everyone says, I'm a taxpayer, you're a taxpayer, but once again, we know taxes are at increasingly high rate. Woodbury County is trying to do our job, the county, I'll just say the county side, from the board before me, has kept, tried to get that levy low, tried to make sure we get out debt, make sure we are truly paying for what we need. And so just so, you know, all our employees know, the board has to look at, how do we fund this? If we want to keep the great benefits, which we do, the board has to look at, how do we fund it without raising taxes? Because everyone knows the board will get, will get all the phone calls and emails of people cussing us out about raising taxes. Not, maybe not literally cussing, but you know, the euphemism of cussing us out. And so I just, just so everyone's know of that, we work with Seth and Melissa and all that, so. All right, let's move on here.
Are we going to table B as well?
Well, no, it's a fixed cost. We would, we would need to go ahead and do that. So Melissa, why don't you go ahead. Item B is approval of 6.5% increase in employer contributions to Woodbury County Health Fund effective January 1st, 2026. Why don't you go ahead and, anything on that?
As I mentioned, that is the amount that Wellmark said at the minimum, the fixed costs are increasing. So that's a good start for employer funding.
Yeah, right.
And that's when the, January 1st, we run on a calendar year, just so everybody knows. You know, our finances run on a fiscal year, so it's a little bit, you know, harder to fund this. But January 1st is when all the new fixed costs will come into play.
Right, currently, right now, everybody knows we're 19.5% behind on fixed costs, on our funding, on a fixed cost perspective. So this is our incremental way of beginning to do that. So, all right, I'll move to approve 6.5 increase in employer contributions.
A second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Motion passes 5-0. All right, thank you Melissa. All right, Item A is report on committee meetings. Any reports from the board? Okay, all right, here, non-citizen concerns, any citizen concerns that were not on the agenda?
I have one.
Yeah.
Just because of what was just approved, this next week, I'll be starting the budget for the fiscal year '27. But this impact will hit about $400,000 to the current year budget. So in December, I will be doing a budget amendment because this 6.5% will hit every department and office. So in order to correctly reflect that, we'll need to do a budget amendment in December.
Okay. All right, thank you Ryan. All right, any other citizen concerns, anything not on the agenda? All right. No one wants to speak about the Iowa Hawkeyes dominating defeat? Yeah, all right, all right. Just trying to, all right, board concerns. I do have a, I've got one or two, but I've got one good thing, I think so everyone here this back two months ago, maybe two and a half, yeah, actually, two and a half months ago, our county assessor Tyler Morgensen informed me that the state wanted to give the county property a 5% increase in evaluation and equalization. They thought we were off in our evaluations. And so Tyler sent in a reply and pushed back and did his own assessment. And we got, we got the positive that we were correct in our assessments, and there'll be no increase in our equalization or evaluation for county residents. So just wanted to say thank you to Tyler for that, to working hard for Woodbury County citizens. So that's my first update. As I remember, to the board and delegated officials, on November 11th is Veterans Day. We won't have board meetings, so make sure you get your claims in early for that. And that's all that I have. Any other board concerns?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, with all the county employees that are here, anybody that I've dealt with and any, we have a lot of great employees, and anytime I've called from Secondary Roads to Sheriff's Department to HR, anybody I've dealt with, everybody's great and does a great job. I'd like to thank, you know, and I think I see a couple of them back there, the Woodbury County Sheriff's Department, and I believe emergency services was there as well. My daughter was in a, you know, a bad accident. Thank God, she, it wasn't any worse than what it was. She's, you know, she got banged, got her head banged. That's more because an airbag didn't go off in her car. But anyway, the intersection there at Mowville, horrible intersection, everybody probably knows about. Somebody came through highway speed. Thank God, did not hit her on the door, hit her on the front left side of her car. And, but, you know, I. And, um, but, you know, I thank the emergency services and the sheriff's department for being right there as far away as I was. I couldn't get there right away. So I'm gonna do a little searching into that. I know it's a state road, what the safety aspects are of that intersection. I know something that happens there every day. Somebody blows through it. Somebody either gets in an accident or, you know, God forbid, gets killed there. Um, it happens every day. And so I think that's something I'm gonna take personally and look at. Um, and if anybody has any good information on that, I, I appreciate it. Then the other thing is, I mean, thank God for phones, cell phones. I mean, her phone went off right away when she was in that accident, was calling nine-one-one and called back after she, you know, probably was knocked unconscious for a little bit, hung up, called back. So got the emergency services rolling and things like that. But, uh, and something else I'm a little concerned with, but I know it's just a misdemeanor in Iowa. It was an unlicensed driver that, you know, ran into her at that intersection as well. And so that's a little concerning to me as well. So I appreciate everything the employees do.
That's good. Yep, we agree. All right, any other board concerns or anything else? Any, Michelle, with elections? Mark, go ahead.
So, yeah, theme of elections, uh, Tuesday is election day, and I didn't know what the board would think. We, we haven't done this in the past, but typically, uh, we still have our meetings at a normal four-thirty time on election days. Typically, the press don't come to the meeting because they're, uh, covering, uh, election locations. Um, I didn't know if the board would consider moving the meeting time on Tuesday to like eight-thirty. And that way we kind of get our business done. It doesn't tie up any county staff late in the day when people are getting off work and going to vote and partake in their civic duty. Uh, we don't need to, uh, tie up people. So I, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I visited with, uh, Joshua Woodman, the county attorney's office yesterday. Our bylaws would allow the chair to call the meeting at a different time, uh, next week, if that's something we wanted to do. Just trying to think of ways that we can be helpful to our staff and not be in their way.
All right. Otter Scaff, you want to?
The right department heads or people can present if we're gonna discuss this item again.
Right. Yeah. Well, hearing that, Michelle, I would just say, Mark, I would just say we just keep it four-thirty then. So.
Okay, sounds great.
Yep. Thanks for bringing that up.
But if you want to show up at eight-thirty, Mark, you sure can. You can vote in advance.
What's that? What'd you say, Mark?
Do I, do I get extra credit?
Hmm, I don't know about that. Time value money, it might, uh, time value voting might be delay, uh, decayed by the time we meet, so might only be worth half an aye.
We'll create a special agenda for you, Mark. Great, just for you.